I guess she's comparing with the all of you. It's all of you that are changed.
All right, it was 5:10 that we were supposed to get back and so it's 5:10 now and we'll get started with our budget workshop, budget workshop. Is that correct? Are you prepared to take us into that? So this was kind of our final public opportunity to talk about a few remaining items that we had, some back and forth and some public input on and different things that before we proposed the final budget and will be voting on that at the June 2 regularly scheduled city council meeting next Monday.
I know there was some conversation amongst council on several issues. I think the first one was in legislative looking at the health benefits that were identified.
Yes, sir. So we had had some funds in there, some potential funds in there for, these are very big books.
And I'll just, I'll take you back through it. We had, you do have in legislative, you do have Ms. Dever and Ms. Joya, their insurance costs are figured into that number as well, so it's not all. But we had calculated because I wasn't able to get hold of one of, I knew where one council member stood and I didn't know where the other council members stood, so we had put in for two. And from what I'm gathering now, we're pulling out one and then there's a decision as far as the last one goes, that needs to be discussed. So we'll pull funds out of one, we'll delete one, but we need to decide, we need to know what we're going to do with that other.
I'll just make it easy for you. Do you mind if I say something?
Sure, go ahead.
So I stand by what I said in the last council meeting. I was talking about the benefits of having benefits for council. I believe personally it's the right thing to do for now and for the future. People that come on board, however, I would be relinquishing, I'm the only one that would be taking part of it. The rest of them either don't need it or wouldn't opt into it or would just keep their stipend. I would be giving up all of my stipend in exchange for benefits and as I understand it, that would lower it down to 17,000 as a burden to the taxpayer. So if council doesn't support it and the taxpayers who are our boss don't want it, then I think we should just nix it. So that's, that's me. If nobody supports it and they don't want it, but it would be, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be a $17,000 if I was giving up my stipend in exchange for health benefits.
Between 17 and 18.
Okay, so I guess that that's completely up to you, but you know, we work for the people. Listen, I'm happy to serve in any capacity. I'm here if I get no money. So I just, I love what I do. It would be a big help to me and my family, but it is something that is added to the budget and 17,000 may be small comparatively to the rest of the budget, but it's still, it's still $17,000 even with giving up my stipend. So I leave it to you guys. Just wanted to kind of kick that off and make that a little easier for you guys.
There was anyone more to chime in on that?
So just to make this understood, what you're saying is it would be 24, but since you're getting paid each and every month from the city, it knocks it down to 17. Is that correct?
Well, I'd be giving that up in exchange for health benefits.
Right, but it's still 17 more thousand.
The total expense for family healthcare.
So it's still 17 more thousand that taxpayers would have to pay.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
You know, my, based off of personal opinion and also just, you know, obviously feedback we've gotten, I would say that I would be open to a council member purchasing benefits where their stipend goes, you know, towards that, but then the additional is 100% paid for by the council member. So there is no city contribution. So it wouldn't be a budget item, just something we could amend that they would have access to the benefit if that is a benefit to them that's better than the open market.
So I did the math on that. Even with my stipend putting in, if it was no burden to the budget whatsoever, it would still be more than I'm paying now, so it wouldn't make any sense. It's just so expensive.
Unless it's better coverage.
Even with, I mean, yeah, it's something to look into. It would have to be significant, but even with that, it would still be huge. It's just so expensive, so.
Yeah, I'd like to add that based on the feedback that I've gotten from the citizens, I think we should remove it from the budget.
Let's do it.
Okay, so, so we'll go ahead and remove that and, you know, I think maybe there is a feeling, a willingness, Council McKean and I discussed, you know, as we add people to the policy that it potentially increases the risk exposure to the city if there's some kind of catastrophic medical benefit, you know, so there, you don't do it lightly necessarily, but that for, for council members potentially, that might be something we would look at if they wanted to come in down the road and pay the full 100% portion, that we might allow that to go under the city policy and accept that, that additional risk as it may be that, you know, if we get to a situation where anyone's interested in that, we could certainly take it up at that point in time as a policy change, but for now, we'll go ahead and remove that, so.
But that could also be a problem too, Greg, because if they didn't get reelected, I mean, what are we going to do in that situation?
Well, they would be, they would be eligible to continue under COBRA for a period of time, you know, but it would cost the city, either way, it wouldn't cost the city anything other than, and once they're on COBRA, I would assume that, I don't know, I will not assume whether or not that would increase our risk exposure or something that happened after they were not currently employed, but we'd have to talk to an agent about that. Okay. Were there any other issues? You know, we had some parking lot issues and things that we had discussed, but I think we'd kind of worked through most of those. Was there any other issues that anybody wanted to address or amend at this point in time?
I'd like to ask what the plan is for the marina. At one point during the budget session, we were talking about three full-time employees and I don't think our activity supports that, so what is...
We went back to two and one?
Well, we currently have two people and one, well, we have two people.
Right. I think the budget reflects, currently reflects two full-time and one part-time.
That is correct. That is correct. That's, that's kind of where we left it. It's open for conversations.
Okay. I believe that that's still too many people, especially when we're losing money and I'm wondering if anyone has done a calculation to determine whether or not we have, we even have the capacity in terms of dock space footage to even break even. Has a break even calculation been done?
I don't, I would have to go back into documents and see in the history. We could calculate it and see.
Okay, I'm not in favor of putting salary for two people in there. I think it's overkill and, you know, since we are not involved in hiring decisions at that level, I think budgeting for it implies that we concur.
Yes, ma'am. And you're, you're right, it does. It implies that you do concur.
I guess one of the things that, we're just, what, a little over 13, 14, 15 months into, into operations there and the data that we looked at last week at council meeting showed basically that the, the only two annual months that we had to compare were April 24 and April 25. We didn't have May numbers yet and that April amount was 70% larger than the April 24 amount, but that's one month, snapshot, we don't know whether that's a trend of increased use or not. It's hard to tell yet, you know, until we have a little bit more data of where we're going on.
We did, we did have more data at the last meeting.
No, that last meeting showed April of 25 and we had an April 24. We didn't have May numbers yet.
Correct. But we had some pretty consistent data about the, the usage and it ran around in the mid 20, 22, between 20 and 25% capacity, which is, you know, 2.9...
Summer for the, for the, you know, private boat use or whatever and we have no idea how that is going to impact, you know, operations either, but...
So we have 2.9 or just call it three boats docking a day. And, you know, most of the private individual uses that were opening up to the public, those folks ought to be able to dock their own boat. You know, you're just going to have to check in with the dock master, so.
Well, and I'm not to argue, please understand that, but having a seven-day-a-week operation and some of it being later in the evening, you know, you really need to have at least two full-time people there, not at the same time, staggering the schedule and everything else. And I would say that as a minimum, but you get some of these larger boats and you do need assistance with tying up or stuff of that nature and you also have the cleanout situation. Our folks need to operate.
Right, that would all be scheduled. I mean, I'm not, I, listen, I think we ought to be adequately staffed, but full-time employees are more expensive than part-time employees and we're losing money and we have clearly heard from the public that they don't like losing money on enterprise activities. And so I'm just trying, I think that that one line item might get us real close to breaking even, is all I'm saying.
How would it work out to have one full-time and two part-time? That way you could stagger the times like you want to, just have somebody that's responsible for the basic stuff.
I, I would like to see, you know, not now, I know we're not going to get that number now, but what, based off the budget we have, what the percentage of occupancy of our dock space we need to be to break even?
Say that last part again.
What, based off the budget we have, what the occupancy, based off the dock space we have, what the occupancy would have to be to break even?
Yeah, that's what, that's what Lynn's...
Right, but if we could get that, you know, at a later time, that would be a good number to have, just to help us with that.
They're working, I mean, they're cut in.
Yeah, you're good.
I, I work in a marina environment and down at Port Operations and our schedules are as affluent as anything and I'm sure that the dock master and the people working down there, their schedules are flexible based off traffic patterns, right?
Well, they're doing, that's a good way to say it.
I'd give them some latitude because if they're working, their tail ends off and they may end up working a 10, 12 hour day based off traffic patterns. When the sunrise sun comes, there are boats on the water. They leave at night, they're there on the water. And I just, I don't envy the people that are working those jobs because that's, it's a long, grueling schedule and, and of course, July, we'll find that out. And so I just, I really think that this is a grueling job and I would not want to work that job. When I was young, I would, not now. And, and I just don't think that we all see what the actual hours those people are working.
And that's why I said it would be better to have one full-time and two part-time because you could kind of rotate the shifts.
We, we've had Marcia say several times that the budget is a living, breathing document, it can be changed and adapted. Could we go with something like that where we have one full-time and two part-time as Mr. Jones suggested and then we look at it and we say, hey, this isn't working out, we have to do what we originally planned for the two full-timers? Is that something we can do? Charlie?
Of course, we can do what council says, but I will just say that we started out with one full-time, two part-time and we had to increase it to a second full-time person.
Okay, so you've already done that?
It does. It depends the quality of service you're looking to provide for that dock. That's really what the bottom line is going to come to be. I mean, y'all, I'm pretty, I'm pretty sure you know where I stand on it. You know, we were put to task to make sure that not only do we have a working dock with marina, but a dock of marina that was drawing positive traffic to downtown St. Mary's and I feel like that's what we've been accomplishing. You can see it in our remarks. Like I said, we're about 4.9 stars. We have high ratings. We're going to lose that if we lose some of our staff members out there, that's just the way it's going to happen. Is there an increased traffic? Of course there is and I think we're going to see that. There's other things we can do. We talked about charging for power, charging other things to help bring in the revenue and I would like to try that if it was up to me.
Yeah, I'd like to see it grow.
Since we had April of last year and April of this year for, you know, to show the increase and, you know, May is near the end, do we have a projection of like where we're at this May compared to last May?
I'll get those numbers for you, but I'll tell you the dock's full right now.
And the dock was full, yeah, last week.
They filled, they put the last boat in yesterday. It's full.
So Charlie, when you have a big, a nice sized boat come in, say it's 30, 40 feet or whatever, can one person actually dock that boat?
Yes, with the help of the captain, they can.
With the help of a captain, does it put us in any type of liability whatsoever, the larger the boat might be, if we've only got one person?
Of course there is, there is.
I said, I, you know, one of the things we don't know, I said, this is a new operation that's still growing and word of mouth, you know, is, has been very good. I've been privy to see some of the comments that have been shared, you know, from some of the boaters and, and the, like I said, very, very flattering, nice things they're saying about the marina operations and, you know, that, that stuff gets out in the boater world and, you know, I think we'll have more traffic. It's just too early to know yet and it's, it's kind of why I'm, I don't know anything about marina operations, I don't own a boat, certainly don't own a 40-foot boat. You know, so I, it makes me a little leery to try to stipulate what, what's really required down there on a day-to-day basis in order to, you know, to provide what we're looking for and to get people to come and stay in downtown and, and to visit and shop and eat and those kinds of things. And we're building something towards the future, you know, hopefully we'll have an additional hotel down there at, at some point in the future, but, you know, so like, you know, I guess I'm trying to lean a little bit more on what y'all are telling us is required in order to provide the level of service that we want throughout St. Mary's with all of our operations, you know, and that's why I kind of, I kind of feel like for this next year until we have a little more time under our belt, you know, for me, you know, I, I'm willing to invest this, this amount of money to see, see where it goes and how it grows and, you know, if we, if we continue to have low utilization rates and we don't get up or whatever, then, you know, then I think there's, there's some cost justification to say we need to make cuts here and we can do that in a couple of months, you know, we don't have to wait a full year, but I think we need to get a little more data to see how it's growing or not growing, you know, before we can really make an educated decision and that's kind of what's hanging me right now, so.
And we are in current peak boat season, you know, so when the new budget starts, if we cut a position, you know, we're in the middle of what could be our peak season and it is a, the budget is a growing...
It's, it's kind of a peak season from what I saw in the numbers for local boaters and smaller boats, but the bigger boats that are coming from up north, that's kind of more of a peak season in November, December, you know, January, but, but you know, like I say, maybe we give it a few months to see how this boater policy that we input, you know, how that affects cash flow, if we can get that cash flow projection, you know, that Lynn has spoken about what's it going to take to actually be, you know, profitable and at what level and, and look at gasoline sales and some other things that, you know, might generate some additional revenue and then, you know, we go from there. I mean, I know at, at truck shops, if I'm not uncertain, they, they charge for showers and baths and stuff like that, you know, and, you know, we're not, I don't think we're doing that, we just have the facility there, it's, you know, for use and, you know, but maybe a usage fee to come in and to, you know, use those facilities would, would offset the cost of cleaning and everything else, so.
Right. I agree. I mean, I would be comfortable with leaving the two full-time people that we have right now if we had a, you know, moratorium on hiring any additional people until we talked about it because the, and I don't disagree with a little more time to get more information, but I think what we're hearing clearly from people is that they don't want us to quote, "invest" their tax dollars in enterprises and I understand that there's some, there are some soft benefits to the community having the marina, but I think we need to, you know, we have some core services that we need to have funding for, so.
Charlie, you said that the fee that the boaters pay, it doesn't cover electricity?
No, sir. If you remember a year and a half ago, when we started this, the whole port, this is state, this is phase one of three phases of the dock. The dock could be expanded out and we wanted to see how the first phase went and that's not just St. Mary's opinion, but that was also DNR who helped fund the grant money. We had to see if, if there was really a usage for these docks, so we're in phase one. And when we put that together, it was built on the system that it wasn't necessarily, yes, it's an enterprise, but the initial concept of this was not in an enterprise mindset, it was to draw traffic to our, to St. Mary's. And that's why they did the transient dockets. They can only be, the boaters can only be there for 14 days. If we were looking to make money, we would have a dry storage, we would be a full-time operational marina, but we're not, we're a transient dock. We're just here to bring people into our house is what it's for.
I understand, but the question that I asked is, they don't have to pay power, I mean...
They don't. So that goes back to what I was saying, so the original idea was to just get them here, so no, for that, that one price covers power pump out, they can use our facilities and that's why I said, I'm very open to trying to make it, you know, more, bring in more revenue to help us balance out and that could be charging power and that's something me and Colin talked about this week. Restroom services, laundry facility, we're already doing golf cart rentals, bicycles. We can pretty much put a dollar amount on any services if that's what the council wishes and that would bring revenue in. I think the hospitality and not losing any staff though can help balance that out though, just to be honest, because we still want to give great service.
You know, I think we need to take a look at other marinas and see what they're charging, you know, for those same amenities. I mean, if they're, if they're, if they're not charging them as well, then okay, but if they're charging them, then we might need to be charging them here as well.
Yes, sir. We've looked at that and so we have undercut a little bit, but that's because there are certain things we can't offer. We don't have fuel.
Right.
You know, we don't have a gift shop that, or a hardware shop that a lot of marinas will have. There's little things we don't, we're just more of the cute bed and breakfast and that's what we are, so.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with like a marina because I haven't had to, I don't have a boat the size that needs power hookups out of marina. I've docked at marinas before, but never had the need for power, but I know a campground, you know, you have a fee for a campsite space that doesn't have power sewer and then there's a different cost for one that does, so there might be an extra charge possibly.
And I'm really on board with trying it. You know, we undercut it in the beginning because your, our competition's Brunswick and Fernandina and they actually have to come in five miles off the ICW to come to us when they have everything at those two marinas and they're right there off of the ICW. So we're trying to essentially cash a line to get them in here.
I think the goal should just be to break even. I don't think we are ever going to make money that dock.
I agree.
You know, but we should try to get it where we're not using the taxpayers' tax dollars to offer marina services to the public because all the taxpayers don't use that. So, you know, I think we, if we can make it break even, we're good.
Okay, yes, ma'am. We sure will try.
I got ancillary duties that my crews down, do down at Port Operations, additional stuff on top of their daily routine, you know. Are there other ancillary duties, other things that need to be done, tasking wise and otherwise?
Yes, sir. We've actually had them pressure washing the launches at Winter Street Boat Ramp, getting the seagull stuff off of the, off of them, pressure washing and tending to some of the things along, along those lines.
For upkeep and...
There's, there, when there's two of them, they're, they're both busy.
Especially during the growth season between February and November, that's when the growth's the worst.
Yes, sir. They, it's not a sit-down, in that, in nowhere in that area.
Yeah. So just keeping the area looking nice, so that's important.
So we're going to keep it the same?
Right, so is, is there any motion or anything to try to amend what we have here?
You can't make a motion.
But I mean, not making a motion, but I mean, a recommendation at this point and we're obviously voting on it, you know, Monday, but...
How many people do you say you have down there now?
Two.
Two full-time.
One part-time.
One part-time, yeah.
Well, let's, let's just keep it at two, two full-time then and go with it.
And try the other revenue producing ideas and then if we need to readdress it, we will, but the goal being to break even.
I'd like for you to come back in the middle of the budget season and say, hey, we're busting at the seams out there, we need somebody else, we need to hire somebody else.
Made us to the constant challenge down there, period, and just for the environment they're in.
So we're going to leave it like it is and then adjust down if we need to?
Again, that's up to council.
Current budget, I'm sorry. Current budget is two full-time and one part-time, but what we have currently employed is two full-time employees.
So we're looking at bringing on a part-time person on the budget that we don't have?
I'm sorry.
So we're looking at bringing on a part-time person we don't currently have?
Well, it's, it's recently been vacated.
As needed. Right?
Well, I'll stay two full-time and see what happens.
So are we asking then to amend the budget?
You'd lower it then?
Yes.
Down, is that, that, what I'm hearing, everybody's...
By one part-time.
And then as Artie says, you know, come, come a couple of months and they're, you know, they will, if we have to go back and amend and add back to it to allow that part-time back in at that point?
Yes.
As long as our data comes in from you guys to validate the need. If the need map validates it, then I'd say press on and get, you know, make it happen because I'm guaranteeing this growth pattern right now, we're working hard down at Port Ops.
Yeah, they are, they're still busy.
Is the request for the part-time employee like at, I mean, is that something from our two full-time employees that they feel they're not handling everything?
We had two full-time and a part-time as of yesterday. Oh, we had two full-time and a part-time as of yesterday. We just recently made a decision with our staff yesterday. So as of today, we only have two full-time members. So just to, we can try the two full-time if council wishes, but we haven't, it's kind of brand-new right now for us to go to that, that number.
And, and you're going to come back to us and say, hey, this isn't working. We need to look at it differently, or adding somebody half-time or whatever?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, cool. We'll make that change back to the two full-time.
Got it.
All right. Was there, I know we had a bid opening today for...
Right.
The city hall, and the numbers were larger than expected?
No.
10 million.
10? Jeez.
So current discussion is, is that, you know, to relook at it and to go back out for bid, to reject that bid?
We, staff needs time to evaluate what was presented. And, but more than likely, we will be coming to council very near future to take action.
And the base bid for this particular, we're just getting in with not finishing some of the things like the courthouse and some of the office space, those kinds of things, was still 7.2.
Something like that.
So around that range. So still higher than the six that we currently have budgeted.
Are these bids, is including the roof these bids?
No.
No.
So...
Do we have a bid on the roof? Yep.
We have, we received one some time ago, so we'd have to have a more recent bid.
So I mean, based, based on that, you know, you know, knowing that even the base amount at that point was over what we have budgeted, you know, I would, I would move to leave what we've got where it is, since it's covered in the budget.
Now 6 million sounds good.
Right. I think we feel differently about this issue. You know, we're talking about putting in a lot of individual offices. And that, that building, that was a call center before. If we do that, it's going to require redoing the air handling system, all the lighting. And I think that we probably need to take a look at an alternative way to use that space and see...
Make it more open.
Make it more open, so that we can use the current air handling system and do some other things. And I understand that you went to bid with a council-approved plan from last year. So while this is a tedious process, I think when we're talking about spending $6 million, and I'd like to point out that there's some money budgeted for that that we do not have in our hands yet. There, it's based on real estate sales that we think are going to happen. But I think we all know that sometimes those things don't come to fruition. So I think it would be really important for us to try and go back to the drawing board and see what we can do with the ARPA money and maybe a couple of million dollars from fund equity with that space, instead of counting on money that we don't have. That's my position.
So the fund source for the total 6 million, it is included in what she describes. Obviously, we don't have it unless we have it. I mean, I would say we leave it penciled in the budget for having it there, but we're, you know, still have to get the right bid to fit within that budget. But it should still be earmarked in there.
Right. Well, and one of the additional potential sales that is not included in that budget is the potential sale of this property, once it's, you know, once it's vacated or whatever. So there are a couple of different potential real estate sales that could impact. And obviously, we're not going to spend the money if we don't get the sales. We're not, not able to do, you know, do the things or whatever. But, you know, we're projecting out and planning for a year, you know, of things we think are going to happen. I mean, that's the whole, the whole point of the process. But given, given the high cost of where this came in to get what we planned, you know, even scaling back to some other things that Councilman King was talking about, you know, we may still be in the range of, of what's in the budget right now. So that's why I say without, you know, I just feel like it's there. We have a way right now that we see that it's going to be covered. And it may not be enough, you know, ultimately, but, you know, and maybe there's some other income sources that, that we'll be able to utilize. But right now, given the cost of what's, what the bid was, I feel more comfortable in leaving that in there than I do taking it out and, and then not having it, you know, when it comes time to, because, you know, we're, the cost to operate that building and air-condition that building right now every, every month and keep electricity on, and this facility too, is costing us money every month that we delay, is wasting money, you know, in that process. And so we need to move on and try to get in that building as soon as, you know, to cut the expenses that we have, you know, the dual, dual expenses. So.
Agreed.
I agree with that.
But that air handling system we put in during COVID, you know, that whole, you know, right? Am I right in that assessment? Bobby?
I think they were done when the call center was put in.
Yeah, they did an upgrade.
Not long before.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's now hardly been efficiently used until we started firing it up and getting it going again. Because that building's been empty for a long time.
Okay. So were there any other items we wanted to discuss here? We're kind of getting up against the time, but we can go longer if we have to, but...
I'm sure you got to stop, start them.
Do it.
Yeah, we got one minute.
According to the city plan.
One minute.
So we're good. All right. So to have a...
Dever, you're not supporting me.
Not supporting?
I'm supporting you, Robert.
Yep. Motion to adjourn. Is there a second to adjourn?
Second.
Second.
Oh, this is...
We don't miss either.
I was going to roll. I'm so glad we have you here to keep us straight.
Thank you.
I can just hit the gavel this time then.
Yes, sir.
All right. This budget work session is closed.
Thank you.
And it's time that we can go straight on into the budget workshop meeting?
If I could just have maybe four minutes?
Four minutes?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Please.
To recess.
We can afford four minutes.
I got to come out of this one.
Yes, we know who to turn.
If you got them, smoke them. Is that what they say?
I'll be back.